Good evening, everyone. There are more seats up here up front if you care to come and sit down when we get started. Welcome to USD 305 Board of Education. Today is September 11th, 2018. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move on, I would just like to point out that all of you are most definitely aware, I would imagine, that today is 9/11. And 17 years ago, we were all kind of muddling through at this time, trying to figure out what to do, what to say, what was going to happen. And I would like to point out that time flies fast, and most of these young adults that are here to receive awards were not even born then. So this is an eventful time in our history, a time when there was a lot of change, some for the better, and some of the new things have made it more difficult. So as we move forward, let's keep those people in our minds. Is there addition or corrections to the agenda?
Madam President, we do not need an executive session this evening.
Thank you. I'd like a motion to approve the agenda. Carol?
Madam President, I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Emma Doherty second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Next on our agenda is recognitions and presentations, and we'll start with Superintendent's Excellence Awards with Jennifer Bradford-Burnan.
Good evening. Today we recognize spring sports state qualifiers who were involved in regional and state playoff action beyond the end of last school year. Please keep in mind that some of our coaches and their teams will not be here due to fall sports, and that some of the students graduated in May. Three golfers from Central High School qualified for state. Patrick Newell is the coach. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the golfers from Salina Central please line up next to Dr. Hardy? As I call your name, please step toward Dr. Hardy so you can receive your award. At that time, parents, if you would like to take a picture, stand up, and we'll be glad to pause for a photo. After you've received your award, please walk to the end of the line and remain standing. State qualifiers were River Weaverling Senior, Lucas Freelove Junior, Mark Grammer Senior, who is at a soccer match this evening. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Well done.
Good job.
Congratulations.
There were six golf students at South High School who qualified for state. They finished eighth place at the state tournament. Jason Hooper is the coach. Kevin Quinley is the assistant coach. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will our golf students please line up as well?
Parker Norton Jr., Cole Stein Jr., Gavin Giroux, sophomore. Graduates were Trevor Mullen and Trevor Harrington. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations.
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 Appreciate you.
You're cute.
Darling.
Thank you, Coach.
I played against them years ago.
Congratulations.
Our next group of awards goes to swimmers at South High School who qualified for state competition in May. Dawn Shiforgian coaches the girls' swimming and diving teams from South and Central High. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the swim students please line up as well? Salina South team members were Lillian Colette Senior, qualified in the 200 medley relay; Brianna Taylor Junior, qualified in the 200 freestyle relay; Macy Xline, sophomore, qualified in the 200 medley relay; Grace Hilbert, sophomore, qualified in the 200 freestyle relay. Graduates were Giovanna Cardolini and Alyssa Zajak. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great effort.
Congratulations.
Nice to see you.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Now we recognize South High School athletes who qualified for the 5A state track and field meet. Coach Justin Ebert won't be able to attend today. Will Jody Nutter, Assistant Head Coach, please come forward? Will all the track students please line up? In the boys' division, there were 16 South High School qualifiers. Team members were Isaac Mitchell Junior, Jaden Miller Junior, Keaton Munsel Junior. Keaton qualified in the 3200 and the 1600 meter and the four by eight relay. Kyle Quill Junior, Brandon Rectonwall Junior, Chris Dominguez Junior, Owen Kulis, freshman, Ivan Pike Junior, Ty Garrett, sophomore, Brogan Willock Junior. Graduates were Daniel Atkins, Tatum Webb, Samuel Haynes, Seth Parnell, Casey Lanu, and Connor Smith. In the girls' division, there were eight South High School qualifiers. Team members were Tori Maxton, sophomore, Camden Schreiber Junior, Brianna Loisenoy Junior, Lauren Rubenstein, sophomore, Haley Lovett, sophomore, Haley LaFort, sophomore, Haley Kraus, freshman, Georgia Bell Junior. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for showing up.
Thank you.
Our next group of awards goes to Central High School athletes who qualified for the 5A state track meet. Due to football practice today, Coach Rick O'Neal won't be able to attend, but Joe Wilkerson, Head Assistant Coach, will represent the track team. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the track students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsor? In the girls' division, there were 10 Central High qualifiers. Team members were Elizabeth Collins Junior, Kayden Cobb Junior, Reagan Geisler, sophomore, Phoebe Helton Senior, Congratulations Reagan. Destiny Jackson Senior, Bree Torres Junior. Graduates were Alyssa Backus, Zoe Counts, Tabitha Dynas. In the boys' division, there were six Central High qualifiers. Team members were Riley Counts Senior, Kation McDaniel Junior. Graduates were Jake Geison, Kedrick Liggins, James Morrow, Louis Soltello. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Coach.
Thanks, Coach.
Thanks for showing up.
Tennis state qualifiers at Central High School will now be recognized. Due to a Lady Mustang tennis meet, Coach Michael Gall won't be able to attend. Will all the lady tennis players please line up next to Dr. Hardy? Will all the tennis players please line up next to Dr. Hardy? My apologies. The Central High team finished second place in 5A state. Qualifying and competing were Reed McHenry, sophomore, was state champion in 5A doubles along with Will Hayes, who has graduated. They were also league and regional champions, finishing up with a record of 38 wins and only one loss. McCabe Green, sophomore, and Chase Corbett, sophomore, were ninth place in 5A doubles and had a record of 30 wins and 13 losses. Max Schaefer, sophomore, finished seventh in 5A singles and had a record of 32 wins and 11 losses. Brady Stack, sophomore, was a state qualifier and finished with a record of 22 wins and 13 losses. Their graduate was Will Hayes. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations.
Proud of what you do.
Well done.
Outstanding.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
From South High School tennis, we recognize Carson Harris, who participated in the state tennis championships. Carson graduated last spring. Ryan Stewart was his coach. Our last group of awards goes to French students at South High School who placed in a language competition. Brenda Geist is the teacher. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the French students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their teacher? Team members are Miriam Benavides, freshman, Caitlin Bergman, freshman. Caitlin placed 10th in state and earned honorable mention in the national rankings. There was one graduate, Ethan Trong. Congratulations, and please allow the Board to congratulate you now.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on, after recognitions and presentations of the Superintendent Excellence Awards is
Salina Arts and Humanities. And Anna?
And actually, we all know Brian.
You get to buy one, get one free.
Okay, okay. Anna, I'm sorry, but I don't know how to say your last name.
It's Pauscher.
Pauscher?
You've got it.
Thank you. Your name is printed here, but we'll let you go too, Brian.
And actually, all I want to do is take this moment to thank the Board of Education for more than 35 years of support for the Arts Infusion Program. Anna is our latest, one of our latest hires at Arts and Humanities, who helped put the guide together that she's going to be talking to you about just in her first few weeks on the job, and is helping lead that effort of connecting teachers and students and artists together. So we thank you for your ongoing support and for the role and relationship that we've had for so many years at the arts in the schools, both in a curricular and in a design way. We've greatly valued that partnership and look forward to years ahead. So with that, Anna will talk to you about what you have before you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you again for having us here today. I am really excited about our latest Arts Infusion Guide. This has been distributed throughout the community and especially to the teachers in every school. It is essentially giving them a resource for the artists that are available through the program. It's both local teaching artists and national artists who are visiting Salina as a resident artist. So those can last from one day to three days or more, depending on what they're doing here. This is funded in part through Salina Arts and Humanities and USD 305, so we're very thankful for that. The guide itself is organized by disciplines. So you'll see it starts with drama, movement, music, social studies, history, mathematics, science, language arts, and visual arts. Also, towards the back of the guide, you can see that the yellow, or the orange headings are community resources. So not only does this guide provide resources to our teachers and our schools, it is also distributed through the community as a resource and helps promote economic development. It's used for recruiting among different businesses and organizations throughout Salina, and we're very thankful to be providing this opportunity.
Thank you very much. It's always nice to have that connection with you, and thank you, Brad, for being here.
Thank you for your support.
Moving on to approval of consent agenda items. We have those listed. Minutes of the August 28th, 2018 Regular Meeting, Personnel Report, Financial Reports, including August Bills List and August Bond Bills List, the Bond Budget Summary, Approval Shilling Elementary Gift Acceptance from Kansas Masonic Literacy Center, and the amount of $12,000 to support Shilling's After-School Academic Support Program. The program runs three days a week from October to March. Approval of Sunset Elementary Gift Acceptance for Playground Equipment from Cheney Construction Incorporated for the purchase and installation of an additional two-base wingset at an estimated cost of $25,000. Approval Lakewood Middle Fundraising Activity. Funds will be used to help fund student recognitions and incentives. And Approval of South Middle Fundraising Activity. Those funds will be used to help fund activity and projects throughout the school year. Do I hear any questions or discussion? Yes.
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Yes, second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion at all or questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Next on our agenda is public forum. At this time, someone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak may do so at this time. Not seeing anyone, we will move to action agenda. And first on that is South High Teen Builder Out-of-State Field Trip with Michelle Palmgren.
Well, we are here again. I know a lot of you are new, so I'll just let you know that this is year 10. It's been 10 years. We've taken over 170 students in the last 10 years to New Mexico. We go to the BIC Navajo Mission. It's on the edge of it. And the Navajo Nation, we're on the edge of it. And this year is a little different because we decided to try all girls. And so far, it has been amazing because we've always had half and half, half-boys and half-girls because it's good for them to hear how the other gender feels about things, and how they can be heard, and how their actions can affect each other. But just in the three or four weeks that we've been, had those girls in the room, it's just been amazing. So really looking forward to that. We're going to do a little bit more on empowering and making good decisions, and we just think we could really say a lot more to a group of all girls than we could in mixed company. And so we are going to go once again, October 19th through 22nd. And I know a lot of you are new. I don't know if there's any questions or if I'm not saying anything I should be.
Any questions? Comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
Are they all the same year, or are they different grades?
They are, what we do is we take suggestions from the principals, counselors, and freshman teachers of usually girls and boys, but this year, girls that are at risk for any reason. The counselor is a very good resource because she knows the stories behind what's going on. And so we put them in a list, and we had about 60, 60 or so. That's too many for me. So we pared it down to a list of 14. And so we have 14 girls during ELO in my classroom. Yes.
I might just ask one question. Is there any curriculum that's used or anything like that during these discussions and things that are going on?
Yes. But I've made the curriculum. It's created from different programs, just on anger, how to handle anger, thoughts and words, and how they affect your thoughts and words, along with other people's thoughts and words, your past, where you're going, where you've been, and not letting where you've been dictate where you're going, and how much power they might give other people over their lives if they don't deal with some of these things. So it's, I just use resources and put it together when Lynn Xline was the principal, and it's kind of morphed through the years to what is good for teenagers. So, good question. Thank you. Yes.
Michelle, what kind of follow-up do you do, if any, with youngsters after they have been in the program? Do you ever check to see whether or not the impact of this continues? Is there any way to?
I love that you asked that question. One young man that started the program 10 years ago just called me over the summer. He now has a five-year-old daughter and a younger daughter, too. But he said, "Thank you so much. I think of that class every single time my five-year-old is..." He had a very abusive father. And he says, "Every time she makes me mad, I think of that class and know that I don't want to be the dad that my dad was." So that was 10 years ago, class number one. So, but there's other, I check, they come to see me all the way through high school. Another thing we do is we invite the seniors in on the very last ELO to give advice to the sophomores, and I'm always amazed at the advice they give. And for instance, one young man was not going to graduate. He did over the summer, but he wasn't, and he broke down in tears. And this was a big, tough guy, and principals would know who he is. Big, tough guy, and he said, "Don't do it. Don't do what I did." And he went into detail. He said, "You're going to think this, and you're going to think that." And so I have them back to talk to him, to give them some advice, and it's usually pretty emotional and pretty good. So, and then they check in with me. I don't have, I would love to take them all back to New Mexico and have a reunion, but I'm not doing that. So, yes, they do check in with me.
Good. Do I have a motion then? Yes.
Madam President, I recommend that we approve the South High Teen Builder Trip to Navajo Nation in Negeezie, New Mexico, on October 19th through the 22nd, 2018, as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
And we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good time. Yes. Next on our action agenda is Central High Journalism Out-of-State Field Trip.
Thank you for having me. Couldn't get any students here just because of everything being so busy, but we do have a bit of a change. It's five students, not four on that trip. But I just want to say thank you. I can definitely tell there's a correlation between administrative support, board support, community support with the success of the journalism students at Salina Central. And I can actually, like directly, it's not that long ago, even though it seems like forever ago, correlate it with the 2017's trip that you guys let us go on. It was that trip that inspired those students and inspired me. I need water. Water always makes me calm down. I just get excited because it's important to me. So we're doing the same thing. We're going to the national conference. It's a chance for the kids to compete. It's a chance for them to go to learning sessions. And it's also an exciting time this year because as of Friday, we found out that we qualified or were finalists for the Pacemaker Award, which is almost like, it's the highest award you can really get as a journalism staff, but it's kind of like a Pulitzer Prize for high school journalism. And getting that finalist, I'm not a Salina guy, but I feel like a Salina person because I've lived here for so long, and getting Salina on the map is important to me. And so having only five schools in Kansas earn the finalist award kind of like gives me some pride in our community and what our students are doing. So I'm just hoping that you'll, once again, let us go and give us the tools that these students need. So the trip is at the Higher Regency in Chicago, November 1st through the 4th, and I think everything else is pretty much already there. So, thank you again.
Any questions or discussion?
Madam President, I move we approve the Central High Journalism Trip to Chicago, Illinois on November 1st through the 4th, 2018, as presented.
Emma Doherty second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Have a good time, and we want to know what happens.
Me too.
Run away.
Congratulations on that.
Yeah.
That's terrific.
Next on our agenda is discussion agenda. We have our superintendent search, and we do have representatives here this evening for that. We have Gary Seacrest and Greg Wilford from KASB to discuss a superintendent's search and the process that they would use. Welcome.
Thank you. We'll let Mr. Wilford distribute our last little item before we begin. Well, thank you for having us. I am Gary Seacrest and my colleague Craig Wilford with KSB Leadership Services, and we are here to inform you of what a superintendent's search may look like in Salina 305. You're getting ready to start one of the most important processes that a board can have, very important decision. We've been doing this, our organization's been doing superintendent searches for almost 40 years, so we feel like we've seen what works, we've seen some of the struggles that other districts may have. In front of you, Mr. Wilford has given you what we would propose if KSB was fortunate to do your search, would be what we call the key dates. So whether you use us or not, we're going to use this particular document to go through the process and what a search would look like. We've also given you a little handout that looks like this, which would indicate the search process. Many of the things that you'll hear from us today are represented in this particular document, so please feel free to take that home and read at your leisure. Our cards are in front of you, so if you have any particular questions, feel free to contact us with questions. Well, let's get the big elephant, is how much this costs. For a district your size would be $6,250 plus our expenses, which is typically mileage to and from our work sites. We're going to make an assumption that tonight, September 11th, would be the day that you have announced your intention to seek a new superintendent. I don't believe it's a secret, or I wouldn't have said that. If you would choose to use our search service, we have a manual that every board member and the clerk would then have that has Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, and Phase 4 of the search. Our job is to get the boards to make this difficult task as easy for you as it possibly can be. So we would lead you through each of those phases to conclusion of a successful search. So, we would lead you through each of those phases to conclusion of a successful search. We advertise, we are not headhunters. Want to make sure that's very clear. We work for every Board of Education in the state, so we don't call existing superintendents and say, "You should apply for Salina," because that district would not be very happy for us. But we entertain many phone calls from prospective candidates. We typically let them know what characteristics the school district is looking for. And if they feel like they would be a good match, we definitely encourage them to apply. As I said, we're not headhunters, but we do advertise a lot, and many times. We would advertise through Kansas Teaching Jobs, of which your folks know about. We would make sure that gets on that site. We would advertise through United School Administrators Kansas, which is the umbrella organization for all of the administrative positions throughout the state. We also advertise through the National Association of Superintendent Searchers. And we have relationships with all of the states. I would fully expect for you to have candidates from out of state. We have relationships with everybody, from the Garry's and Craig's of all of the states. We call those folks and say, "Would Mr. Seacrest be a good candidate in Iowa?" "Well, there's a reason he's looking in Kansas." "All right, thank you very much," is what we need to know. So, we do have relationships throughout the nation. We also advertise the opening through our Twitter accounts, of which many, many administrators in the state of Kansas are part of that. Our Facebook account. We also put it strategically in our KASB news briefs. And then, we also do some very strategic email blasts at strategic times during the process, so people see that. That email blast would include several things, well, more than several, but it would include information about your district and your community. So, if somebody wanted to know the size of your district, the size of your community, your district valuation, the number of students, the number of employees, that information would be available for that person to research. So, your clerk, your PR person will be heavily involved, because we have to have that information to get that into a place that it can be seen. If you go through that key dates, if you would say to us that we wish to use KASB for your search, we would request that we would meet with your board, most likely a special meeting, absolutely as soon as possible. Probably sometime in October. If we got through October, it would be fine. But we would want to meet with you, so that we can start going through the notebook to go through Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the search with you. So, that you kind of have an idea of what your roles will be, everybody within your district, and we can start identifying some of the things that need to be tasked early. You would say, "Why wouldn't we want to advertise earlier than some of those dates?" We would recommend that we wouldn't even advertise the position until early November. "Gosh, we want to be the first one out there." Well, there's other districts in your boat, and they want to do the same thing. Our recommendation is, if you advertise too early, people aren't looking. They also don't want to have to tell their Board of Education until they have to tell their board that they're looking elsewhere. So, our experience indicates that early November is the best time to start the advertising campaign. Now, if this board says, "I don't care what you say. We want to do it middle of October," we work for you. Now, we may give you best practice, and we'll keep you from getting yourself some trouble. But if you request something, then we'll be happy to comply. And if I haven't said that, I want to make sure that you understand, we work for the board. This is the board's search. We give you best practices, things that we've seen over accumulation of forty years that work. If you would look at a search forty years ago, it probably looks different than it does now, because it's evolved to what we believe works. Another thing that we believe is extremely important is that the board is able to identify the characteristics that you wish to have in your new superintendent. So, one of the items that we believe strongly in, that we would recommend to you, is that we have meet with several focus, or as many as you wish, focus groups throughout your district and your community, so that we can ascertain those characteristics. Now, those focus groups are your choice. We can give you some recommendations. If we're fortunate enough to meet with you on that first meeting, we would say, "Here's some potential groups you might look at." And you'd say, "How about this group?" Fantastic. It can be two groups, it can be twenty groups. It's whatever you so choose. I believe in another district, very similar in size, we met with probably twenty different groups over the course of two days. We ask each of the groups the same questions, and then we hope to have some trends at the conclusion of that, that we can report to the board. Then, we also ask the board what characteristics you wish. And then, we'll lead you through an activity. Do your characteristics match the same as your focus groups? Not only is that important, that everybody has some input into this, but it also gives you an opportunity, that when you're trying to identify interview questions, you're asking the questions that are pertinent to your hire. If communications is extremely important, you ought to ask questions about communication. But without asking, you won't know what's really important. So, along with that, as part of the process, we have a bank of interview questions that we would help you get through, so that you don't have to make up questions. You can obviously have your own, but we lead you through that process, because that can be extremely nerve-wracking, trying to figure out what questions that we should ask. We help you with that process also. If you look at those dates on characteristics, one of the things, we put down a couple of potential dates, just because they work. That doesn't mean you have to do them. You haven't even decided if you're going to use us. But this would be some key dates that we think would be pertinent for your district. Even though we're not advertising, or at least we're recommending until November, it doesn't mean we can't have focus groups before that time period. Any questions so far for Mr. Wilford?
The characteristics piece is really critical, because it does give you some insight about what your community wants in a superintendent. And you have feelings, and you've talked to individuals as well. But when you've had fifty to a hundred people that have been involved in that process, to get feedback from them, or more, it really does help present, to you at least, a pretty clear idea of what the community's thinking that you need in a new superintendent.
Let's continue through that key date. If you can see, the next one is labeled January 3rd. That would be a date we would propose, where the deadline for applications would cease on that date. Now, we think six to eight weeks is a natural, a good time period. If we would happen to open it up on November 1st, obviously, that's a little less, November, December, there's eight weeks, and then that first week. Both of us have heard from numerous experienced superintendents saying, "We really like the idea of Christmas break. I plan on applying for Salina. I just don't have my stuff. I'm gonna wait till Christmas break, where nobody's looking over my shoulder, and I can get that done." So, Christmas break is really a good time period, if you're fortunate to have this. Living in central Kansas, you'll understand this. The best time to do a superintendent's search is, timeline is peasant season. Early November until the end of January, and you would be smack dab in the middle of that. So, you would be in prime time for a superintendent's search using these particular key dates. At that point, we obviously, it's an online process. As soon as somebody hits the submit button, those of us in the Topeka office, especially Mr. Wilford and I, would be concentrating on the Salina applications. As soon as it hits, we can start vetting those candidates. We can start calling the people that we know from out of state. If they are, the power of KASB, if they are a local or a Kansas superintendent, we will know them. We will know their work. There's two others in the Topeka office that we would be able to talk to if necessary. If they are an assistant superintendent, we either know them, or we know their superintendent, that we can get information from. And we know every board president in the state also, that we can call to get information from. So, we have our connections, whether they're in-state or out of state.
And as we're vetting those candidates, we're also looking at those characteristics and asking questions of those individuals relative to those characteristics. So, again, that we're trying to find a good match, based on the characteristics that have been identified.
Also, through the application process, we can start making sure that your candidates have the licensure, the endorsement to be a superintendent. You don't hear these horror stories, but there have been districts that have not used search services, that have hired superintendents that don't have valid licensure. So, we make sure we keep that worst-case scenario. So, we're making sure they are able, through endorsement, to be your superintendent. When we have finally got all the applications, and the deadline has come to pass, we then have to conduct or convene a screening team. And the screening team, for sure, will be Mr. Wilford and I, probably a couple of other reputable superintendents that would be representative of your type of district. Somebody that would be familiar with a district of your size, might even be familiar with your district. And then, we would meet in a common location. First thing that I would do, and Mr. Wilford would do, is, "Here's the characteristic that Salina wishes in their new superintendent." So, when you're going through these applications, start looking for those types of things. Now, we know people can write anything they want. They can say they're a great communicator. But when we start calling, we ask about communication, if that's a big characteristic. Salina really wishes an effective communicator. Do you believe this candidate's? Yes. Not enough. Give me some examples of why you believe this person is an effective communicator. When we recommend, and it's simply a recommendation of the candidates to the board, we would say, "This person is a great communicator, as exhibited by these traits that we've heard at through our phone calls." So, we attempt to try to give you some basis for your characteristics. The screening team would then go through all of those applications. Then, we would get it down to a workable number of applicants for interview. And then, either that evening or another evening, depending on when we would convene, then we would meet with you in executive session, because now we're starting to talk about individual names. We would discuss all of the candidates that have applied. So, if you have twenty-five applicants, we'll let you know who's applied. Won't spend as much time on those folks, but then we'll spend a whole lot of time on the applications or the candidates that we would recommend to you. And you keep hearing me say, "recommend." It is a recommendation from us to you, that these are your best candidates for what Salina is wishing for. And at that point, we would ask the board president typically, would then make phone calls that evening. We have typically called the candidates before that night, not to tell them, they're going to get an interview, but we would typically say, "Mr. Wilford, this is Gary Seacrest with KASB. We've been screening the candidates. The screening team believes you to be one of the top candidates. And before we bring your name forth this evening, or tomorrow, there's several questions we want to ask. First of all, do you still have extreme interest in this position? Which means, this is not a practice interview. You get this far, you have interest. Secondly, if they choose to call you, would you accept an interview during this time period? And if you can see the key dates, we've at least suggested a time period. We might do a little bit of work for you. Is there absolutely a date that you cannot come? I mean, you really don't have a choice. If they say Wednesday, you better be able to come Wednesday. Yeah, Monday, Tuesday's really good, and Wednesday's not as good. I would tell you that, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's would work. And secondly, and this is not as applicable in Salina. Or thirdly, if you are the fortunate candidate, would you be willing to move into the district? Now, once again, that's not as applicable here, with some of the smaller districts. That is an issue. So, Mr. Wilford, is there anything you would like to add?
The other piece is that we do a national background check, to make sure that there's nothing hiding in someone's record. And if there is something, that we would share that information with you as well.
Well, that's the extent of our formal conversation. And both of us would be able to, would like to entertain any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions? Yes.
I might just ask one question. Looking at the brochure here that was handed out, quite a few searches you guys have done just since 2015. I noticed last year, even you did for two other districts in our county. It looks like it's somewhere in the average of twenty a year. Do you have any pulse this year, what that would be for your organization?
We're gonna have more than average, we would assume. There was a lot of late resignations last year, which resulted in some interim candidates. So, we know those districts will be looking also, plus the normal ones. I'm not gonna tell you who at this point, but I know that I've already got, if Salina would come our way, that would be number four for me already. And he already knows that he'll be doing some also. So, they're starting to come in, but it's the way it works. I've done as many as seventeen myself in one year. I think we did thirty-five as an organization that year, and that's way more than typical. Typically, I would do anywhere from ten to twelve, which means the organization's gonna do anywhere around twenty-five, I think, is about that average.
Carol?
All the resumes and applications that come in, there's gonna be more than the three to five names you recommend to us. I mean, I'm assuming we get all the paperwork on them to look over. But those other ones, do you put those online somewhere, where we could review those? Is there somewhere on the cloud where that stuff could be? So, if we want to go a little more in-depth into all of them?
We, I'm gonna get to your, get to an answer to your question. We really work extremely hard on confidentiality to the candidates, which means we will share everything that we possibly can at the opportune time to the board. So, you will prob, what we highly recommend, and probably would have a hard time going off of this, is you will not know who the candidates are until the night we make the recommendation. We get so many phone calls. I haven't told the board yet, when are you gonna make phone calls? I really can't let this out. So, we really work confidential. I do know we work for you. You will know who all the candidates are on the night of the screening. We will go through those. The applications belong to the board. They're not ours. So, we leave the hard copy applications with Mrs. Howard for your review. In fact, we recommend you look through those that evening, even the ones that we have not recommended. And then, you would keep those applications for whatever your processes and procedures are in 305. Anything to add?
Carol? Yeah. Just to ballpark, how many applicants would you expect for a district of this size?
You know, that's difficult, because I can safely say there's fewer applicants over the last four years. Now, with that said, you've got a wonderful school district. It's a place people want to be. You know, you could have anywhere from twelve to twenty. I've done some where there's less than five. I've done some where they're right at twenty. You probably have a few that's going that high.
Yeah, last year, I did two. One at a 4A district and one at a 5A district. And the application numbers were sixteen and nineteen, the best I recall.
How many of those, to your recollection, were out-of-staters?
You know, we're getting, you know, if there's twelve applicants, you could almost guarantee two or three of them are gonna be from out of state. Same number for you.
Yeah, ten percent, probably.
All right.
Be a fair assessment.
Any other questions?
Lots of times, we also get out-of-state applicants that express some interest, but then when they find out the requirements for the position, or they find out all the things they need to do to get certified, well, I don't have time to do that. So, sometimes, we have interest expressed, they don't necessarily follow through.
I would assume that there's a whole long list of characteristics that we would be looking at? Am I right?
There would be a very long list. But we try to find a trend, because some stand out. So, from the last meeting until the meeting we meet with you, we put that in a format where we'd say, you know, there was forty-two different responses, but these three, there was twenty-eight people that really thought this was important of the forty-two responses. So, we try to get a trend.
And do you delineate between characteristics that the district would want as opposed to characteristics that the community would be looking for?
We believe they're all important. We give that information to you as the board. And then, when the board is looking through our recommendations, then obviously, you get to decide what characteristics you believe are most important of all of those characteristics.
Okay.
But we don't break it out by, you could have high school teachers, elementary teachers, community, they all go into the pool.
Great.
And the reason is, sometimes those focus groups are small enough, you know there were these five people, and their anonymity also needs to be protected.
Great, yes.
Yes.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. Is there anything else?
Madam President, there's one other thing, just information. If you would choose to use KASB, I've left a contract with your board clerk. And at some point, when you choose to use us, just take a signature, and we would set up a date to visit with you, to get the process started and the details, and get it going for you.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for coming out here and being with us this evening. And you probably have more places to go, too, I would guess.
I'm heading to the far reaches of southwest Kansas.
Okay. Okay, well, happy trails.
Thank you.
And thank you also for the brochure and the handout.
And no matter what, we still work for you. So, no hard feelings, one way or the other. I want you to know that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Continuing on to school board reports and upcoming dates of importance. Upcoming dates, Tuesday, September 18th. Salina Education. Foundation, thank you. I was at a stalemate there. Fall breakfast is at Salina Country Club at 7:00 a.m. And Wednesday, October third, KESB Fall Regional Meeting at McPherson at five PM. And, uh, starting with, uh, board reports, I'll start with you, Gabe.
Um, I have nothing to report.
Okay, Anne?
I attended a training meeting of the Heartland, uh, Early Education Policy Council, and, uh, and they are starting their, their pre-K, state pre-K with the, uh, at Oakdale Elementary this year. And that, is that the therapeutic preschool? Yes, it is. Okay, sorry, uh, and, um, it includes, uh, case managers and attended care from Central Kansas Mental Health and support from Central Kansas Co-op and Education. And it has kids with diagnosed disabilities. Um, there's just starting with three or four kids, and they're hoping to expand to eight. The other thing I wanted to mention is the, uh, Smoke Hill Education Service Center is, uh, as you've seen in some of the material you've gotten, they are sponsoring the Wichita State Future Maker Mobile Learning Lab on the eighteenth and nineteenth of September in the parking lot at the, uh, Smoke Hill Education Service Center across from Central High School with hands-on STEM activities. And, uh, you have to have reservations to go see it, so that sounded interesting to me. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, Jim?
Yes, uh, so I was at the policy council training that, um, Anne attended. And there were some, some notes I made that I thought were kind of neat with that. Um, one was that Head Start actually services prenatal two-three to age three, and then age three to five. Um, so it's, it's starting very early. Um, and then I, I wasn't aware of the part day program, but they've also got school day, school year. So a full school day for preschoolers that's running now, um, along with the, the K prep. And one of the, the recent studies, it was kind of interesting to me, for every dollar invested in Head Start, there's a seven dollar return, uh, is what they've figured out now. So a seven dollar return for every dollar invested in that early education. So I thought that was pretty neat when we look at our Head Start program and the things we've got going on there. Attended a tour of Central High with the, uh, twenty-five year reunion there. Mr. Lee guided that. And one thing that was really neat, uh, about that to me is the, the facility's awesome. And being a graduate from South, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't want to say that that's hard to say from, from Central, but just the sense of pride going through there. And the, the folks who are coming back that live in the Kansas City area, Wichita area, walking through our school saying, man, maybe we should move back here so our kids have this opportunity. That was, that was really pretty neat. Um, and then going to the Teacher of the Year Luncheon on Saturday. That was, that was really a neat event to go to. There was a couple of things that stuck out to me there. I was kind of surprised, listening to the post-secondary students, or the, the post-secondary teachers who were nominated for that award, they weren't core classroom teachers. Not, not very many of them were core classroom. Most of them were those teachers who are teaching, um, at-risk students, working with, you know, at-risk students and vocational type training programs. I just, that was something that really stuck out to me as kind of unique for them.
Thank you. Gary?
Well, similar to the tour I took some folks on at Central with Mr. Showman helped with a few weeks ago, I took that same group with a few changes in people there. Folks who, uh, didn't quite have the mobility and a little older, and they didn't want to brave the big crowd of the big open house, but they wanted to go through. And when Mr. Stevens gave very generously of his time and, and, uh, took them through, showed them around, and, uh, we have, uh, about a dozen folks who are very impressed with both of our high schools now. So that was great fun getting to watch them and listen to their questions and the answers about our schools. That'd be it.
Thank you. Carol?
Also had the opportunity to attend the Teacher of the Year Luncheon honoring Travis Peterson and J.C. Murphy. Um, and, um, it was really a fine occasion. We appreciate everything that our teachers do, and those two are excellent representatives.
I too got to attend the, uh, luncheon at the country club in honor of all the teachers. And I think one thing that stuck out was whether you won the award or not, uh, you're all very, very valuable as teachers and, and what a, a wonderful, uh, situation it was to be able to recognize all of them. So it was very well enjoyed.
Thank you. Um, I too went to the K-toy banquet and, uh, enjoyed the time there. Uh, there's always a lot of work that goes into that banquet and a lot of recognition of a lot of people. And I would like to know how many pictures, or how many people have pictures with themselves with Dale Dennis. He has been, he has been there for so many years, um, uh, the last seven years that I've been on the board. And then I know for ten years I was part of the group that, that did the decorations and the putting together of the banquet. And I know he's been there every single year. And, and I know he was there before that, so I'm just adding up in my mind, how many people has he had pictures taken with?
He's kind of the Energizer Bunny, don't you?
Yes, and, and they do this, they have four, four dinner meetings. Two of them are at noon and two of them in the evening that they go to, uh, on two weekends. And, uh, it's just marvelous, the energy that you see in that room. Plus, um, our candidates also get, get an opportunity to be part of the KEEN Network, K-E-E-N, Kansas Exceptional Educators Association, uh, network. And, um, that's quite an honor and a privilege to be a part of that. So, um, we have excellent representatives, and I think they enjoyed their time. And, and I think they felt quite honored, and it's something that teachers need to have. So with that, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I would like to recognize, um, our Horizon Award winners, Brooke Hawkins, third grade teacher at Husner, and, uh, Michael Billinger, uh, Computer Digital Literacy at Lakewood Middle. That is one of the best things that we get to do, uh, the many things that we do here, is just to go and surprise them. You know, they're, um, second-year teachers, but a lot of this has to do with their first year. And it is interesting because they always seem so surprised when we know they're really good. And one of my favorite stories that came out of that building, and I just have to share this because it brings a lot of pride. We had one of our teachers in that building at Husner that, um, they found out in the afternoon that they were going to be getting a student the next day who spoke no English. And that teacher, what they did, this is one of our first-year teachers, changed their lesson plans, taught their students some greetings in Spanish, and then that evening stayed and put the words up in Spanish around the room. So the next day when that student came in, instead of them being, you know, this really uncomfortable situation, they were welcomed like a hero, and the students all spoke to him in their native language and greeted him. So I think that's just an example of type of teachers that we have, so that is real exciting. Right after that, I had an opportunity to go speak to our Intro to Teaching, uh, at, um, at Central High. So I spoke to some of our high school students that are seriously considering being teachers. And that was really fun too, to listen to them and their enthusiasm. And when you, when you ask them, what do teachers do? There's that pause because they said, well, they teach. And then they have to try and explain, what does that look like? So that's great entertainment. I was really encouraged, there's one young man in there who, um, he's just affirmed that he wants to be a teacher for students with special needs. I was really proud of him for being that way. The other thing is that, of course, when you, then you go to the, um, Kansas Teacher of the Year banquet, and you see all those rock star teachers there and, and from all over the state. And after thinking about all those things, my first thought was, wow, our future in education in Kansas is in really, really good hands. We should feel pretty good about that. It's real impressive. Uh, another thing that I did recently is I went to the Dean's Advisory Board for K-State Polytechnic. It's very interesting, their enrollment is up. They're very proud of that. They are working really hard to have a, be a good princess, or presence around the whole country instead of just the Midwest. One thing, of course, we know that their drone, unmanned drone program. Uh, the president of Kansas State University has announced that he wants K-State Polytechnic to be the leader in the world for unmanned drone training. So I thought that was pretty interesting. And by the way, USC three oh five is working on a collaborative, um, Lynn, you want to tell me, how do we say that? A pathway? It's not really a pathway, is it?
It's not really a pathway, but they're, um, they have contacted us about trying to offer some coursework to our students. And what would happen is that, um, they would, our, we would have a couple of our teachers go to training, and then our teachers would be the ones to, to deliver the curriculum. And the students would earn a safety certification, and they would also earn a remote pilot in command, I think is what it's called, um, which would allow them to actually be employable. And there are evidently many jobs in this field, and, um, that level of education would open up doors for students. And so we're trying to come up with a partnership that we would bring to you, um, for a course proposal, um, for just a small number of students to start, but pretty exciting, really.
So it's really exciting to have that in our own backyard. We're very fortunate. The other thing they did announce at the, uh, K-State Polytechnic meeting is that there is an incredible shortage of pilots throughout the whole United States. And they were talking that they think it'll take a generation before they can catch up on the demand. And so they, they gave us a little tip. They said, if you're ever in an airport and your flight is delayed, it may not be because of weather. It may be because they're waiting for pilots to show up from another flight. And I thought that was fascinating. And they also, um, of course, K-State Polytechnic has some real good connections with our, um, like United Airways and those. And so those, uh, young folks that are there, they learn how to fly. And then before you know it, they are already put into, uh, some pretty big responsible positions. So I'm always wondering how young those pilots are. I hope they have enough hours in the planes that we fly in. And out of that meeting, um, one thing we were talking about that I just want to, uh, lift up is how fortunate we are in Salina to have the different entities that we have for education. When you think we have Salina Tech, which also their enrollment is up quite a bit. We have Kansas Wesleyan, and of course, K-State Polytechnic. So we're very fortunate in, in Salina that our students can go right from our doors and have other great opportunities right here in town. So, Madam President, that's my report.
Hey, uh, since we have nothing for an executive meeting, correct?
Correct.
We are adjourned, and thank you all for being here.
Madam President, there is a meal set up for the board.
Okay.
It's, uh, the boardroom, right? Right across the hall in the boardroom.